Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, town of Simsbury. Today's Tuesday, March 23. All who can, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me put my flag up there. Here, okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty To everyone. Okay, I'm gonna start with a roll call here. If you are here, please say here, or aye. Holly, bim? David, loomy?
And he's a great guy.
Dave's not here. Okay, Aaron Levitt Smith.
Here.
Hello, Aaron.
Hello.
Craig McCormack.
Here.
Hi, Craig. Alan Needham. Alan. Don't see Alan. Okay. William Rice, that's me. I'm here. Rich Cortez.
Here.
Hello, Rich.
How you doing?
And Julie Eaton. All right, great. Let's see, for regular members, we have one, two, three, four. So barring any late arrivals, let me just check and see who's here. Alan, are you there? I don't see you. No. Dave Blumey? Nope. Okay, with their absences, I'm going to ask that both Rich and Julie be promoted to full members tonight. You can participate in deliberations and all the voting. Unless you don't want to, say so, or... That okay, Rich?
It's what we're here for.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, happy to. Thank you.
Very good. Let the record show that both Rich and Julie have been promoted to full members for this evening's meeting. Very good. Next, approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a review of the February 23rd minutes, which we were not able to do at the last, the last meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aaron. All in, or any discussion on the amendment to the agenda? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, six, zero, zero. Thank you. Okay. So since we have our secretary absent tonight, do I have a volunteer to lead us through here, or if not, I'll do it myself, either way?
I didn't print the minutes, or I would do it.
Okay, I'll do them. So February 23rd. Let's see, oh, here comes Dave Blumey, I betcha, maybe?
Nope.
No? Okay. Page one. So Aaron, do you have access to the minutes electronically, or?
Yeah, no, I just, I took notes on what needed to be
Okay.
Be more green and not print, you know?
Up, understood. Okay. Page one is our lines one through 50. Any comments from the commissioners?
On line 42, had should be hand, I think.
Okay.
Somebody wants to read that, but...
Yep, so it's a line 42, it says, right now it's written as, on the right had sign, side, it should be hand, right hand side. Okay? Anything else on that page, commissioners? Okay, lines 51 through 101.
On line 63, now should be how?
Let's see what it says, line 63, that it is about people's perception, no matter now they, the, okay, so now should be changed to how. Line 63, the word how, now changed to how. Yep, good catch, Aaron. Anything else in that one?
It's 77?
Yep.
Character of place, I think it should just be character. Sense of place or character, we were talking about. So I think it should be character, not character of place. If I'm remembering the conversation, but...
Okay, so it says, Mr. Glidden clarified that there has been a proposal to remove the words "character of place" from the state zoning regulations. Okay, I don't know the answer to that one. It could be character or place, or sense of place is the way we use it, right?
Right.
So...
Recall, it was really the word character that was, yeah, that was what, what was being removed. So I think that's what the reference is to.
That's where I got it.
Remember as well.
Okay, then what strike the words of place? That's on line 77 and 78, and I'll now read, remove the word, the word, character from the state zoning regulations. Anything else in that?
Is Michael on tonight?
Uh, no, Mike, Mike is not with us, but we have Tom Hazel sitting in for him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm the assistant job planner, I'll be filling in for Mike today, he had a conflict.
Oh, I'm not sure we've ever met, so nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you as well.
Uh, okay, pages 102 through 120, I'm sorry, lines 102 through 123. Someone may, please make a motion?
I move that we approve minutes from February 23rd with, with the changes made tonight.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Craig seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Good. Okay, so now we'll go on to the minutes of the meeting from March 9th, 2021. I really don't think we have to spend much time on this. We didn't, we didn't conduct any business. I've already checked the attendees, and that appears to be accurate. So I make a motion to accept the minutes from Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, as submitted.
Bill, if we weren't there, should we not be voting? I mean, I, I don't think you can get, but you wouldn't be able to get a quorum.
Yeah.
Because there, so I don't know what to do in that situation, because you're, there weren't enough people for a quorum. I mean, I'm willing to approve them based on, there's not much to approve, I mean, but I typically, if you're not there, we don't, I don't approve.
Right, yeah, so, you know, in that case, typically, we ask that, you know, commissioners who are absent may look at the video, you know, the replay on SCTV. Honestly, you know, there's really nothing of much content here, so there's very little risk. So I'd like to just, you know, have my motion stand.
Okay.
Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Holly. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes from March 9th, 2021, as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, now we'll get to the meat of the agenda. Next is, we have, we have a public hearing that we need to open. So Tom, I think, I'm just gonna open up the public hearing, okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for application 21-01 of James and Nancy Brown, owners, applicant, for a two lot subdivision on the property located at 34 East Wheaton Street, assessors map H14, block 109, lot 018, zone R40. So this is how I'd like it to progress. I've opened the public hearing. Like to hear from the applicant, or the applicant's representative to explain the application. Then I will make opportunities for members of the public to comment. And then commissioners will have the opportunity to make final comments, I, I guess we could ask...
Jim Craig. Climate.
Okay, so, oh, Alan, you're here, huh?
Sorry, Bill.
Laura, can you please mute the caller?
Okay, so commissioners, feel free to ask the applicant questions during the, the discussion. But following public discussion, you'll also have another opportunity to, to make your, your comments regarding the application. After all that discussion is done, we'll, we'll decide if we want to have a motion to close the public hearing or not. Okay, so just a little housekeeping, Alan. You...
My apologies.
Yeah, that's okay. I have already seated someone in your, in your absence, so you're, you're essentially an alternate tonight?
That's okay, fair enough.
Okay, good. So then I will ask the applicant, or the applicant's representative to describe the application that we have in front of us.
Evening, I'm Brian Dennow from Dennow Land Surveying. We prepared the plans for Ted Brown for the two lot subdivision at 34 East Wheaton Street. Ted is also here with me tonight on the Zoom call. What we have is, we have a 7.87 acre lot that Ted bought in two parcels, his home parcel where he's lived, and he bought the four acre parcel next door and merged it with his house lot. He was, one of the assumption, maybe one of his kids would live next door home, but they've decided not to. And so he's gonna subdivide it into the four acre lot that he bought, after he bought his house lot of 3.62 acres, sorry, not 3.1. And it's an R40 zone. Both lots meet all the regulation, house square fits on a new lot, we have over 200 feet of frontage. The zone requires 40,000 square feet. 24,000 square feet plus, so instead of just under an acre, we have four acres in the site. The site is gonna be served by onsite septic system. We did soil tests with the Farmington Valley Health District. The soils were excellent, we have an approval letter that we filed with our application from Farmington Valley. Will also be served by an onsite well. The lot does have some easements on it that are shown on the plan. In discussion with one of the abutters, I did omit uneasement on the south side of Ted Brown's house lot. I have added to the plan, which will be part of the plan before we file it with the town. There's really not a whole lot going on here. The site is open, he might have less than half an acre that they cleared to build the house. The house is gonna be a quarter feet off the road, right at the edge of the woods, about the same distance off the road as the existing house on number 34. And to the north of us, there's some good evergreens that will remain there now. They'll remain after the house is built also. We do show some erosion controls, but a 40 scale site plan will have to be prepared if you approve this lot, before any building can be done there. Approved by Farmington Valley Health District and the town building. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and Ted is also here to answer any questions you might have for him.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
So just, I do, I just wanna be, so you're, you're just looking to do one lot for one house next to the one that's existing? Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to double check. All right.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I think we all saw the letter from the Lanzes about a historic marker, which I didn't know about. There's a, I believe, a right of way, a footpath to it or something, will that be preserved, the marker and the right of way to it?
Yes, it will. Yeah, that's the one I was speaking about, that I omitted from my plan. That's on the southern half of the site, but yes, we will, we will show that on the plan before we file it with the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, the one comment you had just talked about was that it would be served by well? I thought I read in one of the letters from the Farmington Valley Health District that it was gonna be served by public water.
You are correct. I misspoke there.
Okay.
I was just looking, I was just, I just worked on four plans and I pulled out all of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're right, it will be served by public water, correct.
All right.
So as this is a re-subdivision, it is subject to all the requirements of our subdivision regulations. And one of the parts that I'm particularly interested in is your thoughts on any open space dedication, or anything like that?
It was discussed with the applicant and Michael Glidden about where would we put open space that was usable, open space that the town would like? And really, it's an eight, an eight acre site, we could preserve the back with a conservation easement, but that's really a private conservation easement. And maybe we could put a conservation easement around the historical marker, but, you know, that's... Does the commission feel that's appropriate and adequate for open space dedication?
Well, we've really been trying to try, interlace all the open spaces as much as we can to create continuous or contiguous access to these open spaces. Can you describe on the, on the, the plan where, where this historical marker is? You said it was the south side?
So, our property is on East Wheaton Street, which is on our west side. And we abut the Lanzes next door, so the right of way to the historic Lance spot is our driveway between, you know, it's on our property, but it's on the Lanza's side of our property. So if you go back behind us, there's a little stream back there, and it was the original Ensign Bickford factory that wasn't there for very long, it blew up, I think, within 20 years of when it was originally built. So our driveway on our south side of our house is a right of way to that landmark. And it's actually not on our property, it's on the Foley property behind us.
Behind you, yeah.
It's right behind the Lanza's property, actually, it's more behind the Lanza property, I think, than it is behind ours. But our driveway is the right of way.
Is there a lot of attraction to this historic site?
They had, I think it was their 150th anniversary about 10 years ago, and that's the only time they've ever seen anybody back there.
Tom, have you been in conversations with Mike or the applicant about this aspect of the re-subdivision?
This aspect of the re-subdivision has not been proposed on paper to the town. So we're not aware of the missing right of way, nor the open space proposal, whether it's fee in lieu of, or a carve out of the parcel being subdivided. So staff has not had a chance to review those documents and those proposals at this time.
Um, could I ask a question? I'm kind of looking at some of the documents on Dropbox, but I don't, it's hard to visualize what we're talking about. Would any of the presenters have a map that they could share with us and highlight the property, this, this marker and right of way on the map?
Um, everything that we submitted, the town said that they would post them, and I do not have.
Um, everything that the town has been provided has been put on Dropbox by Mr. Glidden. I'm not, I'm not aware of where that marker is, unfortunately. In Mike's absence, I haven't had a time to do a full review of the plot plan that was proposed, so the marker I do not see. But the open space requirement and the missing easement is something that I am aware of. I was more focused on the open space requirement through the regulations. So I raise my hands in defeat when it comes to the secondary easement that seems to be missing, but that may be shedded more during the public hearing, if the Lanzes are present, they may be able to describe it if Mr. Dennow doesn't have the document available.
The, the easement is along our southern border of number 34. It goes from the street, and it matches the 40 foot side yard, and goes all the way to our back corner, all along the Lanza's property. And then it goes on to the Foley property, where the old foundation is. The old foundation is to our southeast, behind the Lanza's, on the Foley property.
Exactly.
And that, that easement is also used as our driveway, it's used for the Foley's to access their property. And I believe the Lanza's also use it to access their property.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions before I invite members of the public to speak?
Could we, um, we could do fee in lieu of, right, instead of land?
That is always, that is always an option, and it has not been proposed in a, in a document at this point.
They haven't proposed it.
To my knowledge, we haven't had a proposal in the, either carve out of open space or fee in lieu of calculations.
Right, but that might be something that they would be willing to consider.
It's an option that they are available to, as well as that easement plot plan for the second.
I would think that preserving the easement to a historical marker would be more interesting than in fee of lieu of, fee in lieu of, right?
Um, they're separate issues.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought they were.
Or they can't be considered open, an open space carve out?
Uh, no, the easement would be something that is either required or not required. If it is not required, it could be presented as a possible open space option, but that would be for the town to decide if it was contiguous with what needs to be approved under an open space carve out, if it meets this criteria.
The easement exists through our property. It's a 40 foot wide easement from our western border to our eastern border. We can't eliminate it, we can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
But it's not, it is not get, it gets you to the part where the historical marker is, but we can't do anything about the historical marker, it's not on our property.
Yeah.
That access is there, it's, it runs with the land, we can't get rid of it.
Brian, excuse my ignorance on this, because I came in, kind of in the fourth quarter here. That easement exists, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it cannot, so it cannot be used for open space? Yeah, if it's an exist, if it's an existing easement, it, it needs to be represented on the plan, and that's what we're missing. I'm sorry, I was getting a little bit convoluted there. It's missing, it's missing on the proposed plan, it needs to be rectified on a new plan for the town to review. Open space separately needs to be rectified either on a carve out outside of that easement, or in a fee in lieu of proposal. That's where the town stands.
In, in my first discussions with Mike, it was gonna be a fee in lieu of, because what do we have for open space that's really open to the public?
And that would be acceptable, but we just don't have the proposal in hand, that's all.
Thank you, because I was, that's, I was thinking, and, and no, Bill, I agree with you about, you know, connecting open space, but it doesn't sound like this would really afford us any usable open space and to be able to connect anything, so I, I would rather see fee in lieu of, that we could then use at a later time.
To buy a better parcel.
Correct, somewhere, you know, that, that would be my...
And that was my discussion with Mike.
Okay.
Well, can you proceed with the subdivision application without the filo being part of it?
Staff has not had time to review any of it yet.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking if we need to carry this on, because...
That's why, that's why we have not had staff comment proposed to the planning commissioner.
Right, I, I get that, I'm just asking about procedure tonight.
I would take public comment and make your decision to continue or to decide.
We cannot move forward with staff approving fee in lieu of open space and the amount as a condition of approval?
I would believe it's an incomplete application without those details.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Um, I would believe it's an incomplete application without that up to date plot plan, or those calculations being submitted for review, and to be approved by staff.
Well, in our defense, it's hard to get any comments back from staff. We've, I've not got one comment or memo from staff at all. And my emails go unanswered, my phone calls go unanswered, so it's hard to have, you know, a complete application when you have a question, but we don't get any answers. I mean, this is, this is something that's dragged on because we're gonna have a quorum. I haven't got any staff comments, we could have addressed that in staff comments if we got them. We are willing to do the fee in lieu of open space and do that with the town staff, but having to wait another two weeks, months to get that done, you know, are we gonna get it done? Are we gonna get the paperwork that we need?
Again, I apologize, this is me coming in at the fourth quarter, all the notations that I have are just to the fee in lieu of open space and the missing easement on the plot plans, I don't...
The missing easement is, is an oversight on my part, but it has no effect on the subdivision itself. It's paperwork that Mr. Lance pointed out that we need to show. That's an easement that we can put on the plan, it has no effect on a new lot, it has no effect on the density. It will be on the plan when it gets filed with the town.
I've just been...
It's not possible to, to approve this pending even a dollar amount, pending a revision of the application, no?
I would leave that up to the commission to make that decision, that's beyond my pale. You are allowed to do as you wish, but that's the staff stance, we are looking to review those two items, it's up to you. I would review the public comment and move forward as you wish.
So if, if we decided not to vote tonight, can we get an assurance from the town staff that they'll take a look at this and get back to them in a timely manner? Because it sounds like...
As soon as it's provided, we would review it. I don't know what the kind of conversation between Mr. Dennow and Mr. Glidden have been. I just know that those were two outstanding items that I was made aware of.
It sounds like...
It's a simple, it's a simple review, yeah.
Right, but it sounds like there haven't been any phone calls, if, if what I'm hearing is correct. So I, I'm just trying to speed this up, because I, I hear the frustration, and we know how long this process is to begin with, and I just want to be fair to the applicants who, you know, no fault of their own two weeks ago, and I apologize to you, as I know I was one of the people that couldn't be here for family reasons, but I, I just, you know, to be fair to them, I, I don't think they should have to wait two or four weeks. I, I'm just trying to get some kind of assurance from the town that if we don't vote on it tonight, I mean, we could...
It's not gonna die, it's not gonna die, I mean, it can be continued, but I apologize too, because I've been the assistant town planner for just a few weeks. I'm not privy to all the things that are, all the moving parts that are going on. I'm trying to do my best to review what I've been told and what's going on.
I get all that, but I guess my question is, can we assure the applicant that this will be resolved within two weeks if get, over the next meeting? And can this put the applicant in a position where he's harmed, other than annoyed, which I get?
I think it would be more of annoyance, he would not be harmed, I think it could be heard. Special meeting would have to be referred to Michael to review if there could be a special, or if you guys meet. I don't even know your meeting schedule, so I apologize for...
Second, second and fourth Tuesdays.
Then, then, yeah, there's no issue, it could move along, that's, that's not a major issue here. Especially if the applicant is in favor to, for us to review and get those documents in our hands as soon as possible. We would review them and be prepared and have a full staff report, and if it meets the requirements, it would probably in favor. I don't believe that there's any major hurdles here, so I don't believe, it's more of an annoyance, as Alan had spoken, and not a detriment.
So, Bill, I'm sorry.
Let me just, I want to ask the, you know, Brian and Ted, do you guys have a, a fee in lieu of proposal prepared?
No, I have not. I spoke to Michael about it and he never got back to me after we spoke for one time.
Okay.
Actually, it's, it's pretty well spelled out in the regulations. You do, uh, and it's appraisal of the property before it's cut in half, and it's a certain amount of that, or I think it's thirty three hundred dollars. You, you can, you can do the appraisal and do a percentage of that, or you can do thirty three hundred dollars, I believe, is the amount in the regulation. If I remember correctly, I haven't.
A simple calculation, I think it's very easy.
Yeah, well, where this gets hung up, where this gets hung up is, uh, both parties accepting who will do the appraisal, and we, we have successfully negotiated with applicants in the past on a kind of a shortcut method, rather than fighting over who's gonna do the appraisal. We agreed on a, on a value write off. And I think the regulation says, you know, ten percent maximum of the, of the the, the parcel value before subdivision. So this is a seven, seven point three two acre, something like that?
Seven point six two, six three.
Seven point six three. Let's call it seven, seven point six three. Who knows the going rate for, for land in Simsbury per acre?
Not a real estate agent.
I think we should get something in writing and take it onto staff to make. Yeah. We're, we're willing to do the thirty three hundred dollar fee if that's acceptable.
We have approved twenty five hundred on a multi, a, a multi lot subdivision.
Twenty five hundred then?
Yeah, I like thirty three.
Got it.
Okay, can we agree on thirty three hundred?
Yes.
Okay. So let's open up comments from the public. So please just kind of, I think you can, can you raise your hand on using Zoom? Can I see anybody raising their hand? Is that possible? But when you do speak, please state your name and your address and then make your comment. So maybe if you just raise your, physically raise your hand and I'll, I'll, I'll acknowledge you. Okay, Stacy, you're first up.
Yes, hi, Stacy Savin fifty five. Hi, Wood. First of all, thank all of you people for giving all your time to these activities for our town. I can't see everybody here, but I think I have the same question that was raised by a lady earlier, which is it's very hard to see where these property lines are. So I'm in a butter on Highwood Road. And I did speak to the surveyor. And, but I, I haven't seen the map. So I gather you don't have a screen share that you can stick that map right up on this Zoom or even hold it up so that I can just see where, I, I have easements that run from my property all the way down to East Wheaton Street. Ted, I don't know if any of this touches on my easement, so I just want to be able to see that. Where will I be able to find that visual?
Unfortunately, Mike was gonna post that. I don't know if you can see it here, because it's probably washed out, but your lot is up here. And your easement comes across forty two, across the back of the proposed lot. And then across other land of HIPAA and onto your property. So your, your way up here, our development is way down here in the woods. So your easement that goes up to your lot is way down, way up here.
Yeah, I, I, it's only at your chest when you hold that up. Everything below your chest I don't see on my screen.
Stacy?
Yeah, yeah.
Your easement cuts through just the back corner of the property that we're selling, which your easement is on the plan. It's clearly shown and it will remain just the way it always has been.
Yeah.
Okay, where can I find this map? Is this on file somewhere or?
I have a copy, Stacy, I can.
I'm also working to see if we can get it put up. I'm not sure if we can pull that up, but I'm working with the host here to see if we can get a copy of that put up on a shared screen for the proposed split plan.
Well, anyway, Ted, that would be great. I, I'd love to just take a look at it. That's okay.
Yeah.
So you already, you already have, it sounds like you already have a somebody that's gonna build, yeah? I mean, it sounds like you're ready to, to move.
There's a buyer that wants to build, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your easement crosses Ted's property at almost over four hundred feet from the road.
Yeah, it's way back in the corner.
Way, way back in the corner.
I know, and there's the elevation thing, but I, I just want to know where this new neighbor will be relative to, to my property. That's what I want.
All plans are currently available on the town's website under the agenda if you consider if you scroll down a little bit further. But I'm trying to screen share it now, so just bear with me for one second.
From the bottom of the bank, we show the proposed house hundred feet towards the road. And the house runs from your property.
Brian, you're breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, I think you've got to. I think you've got to come back to the mic, yeah.
Unfortunately, with my screen share, I cannot turn it around, I don't believe.
Yeah, I was unable to rotate it either.
Hmm, yeah, that's.
There you go.
Is it open to the public?
I can see it.
Here.
I don't think I can hear it.
That's, that's the existing conditions. If you scroll down, they'll have the split on the next page.
Please feel free to instruct me.
Not a problem. There's the split.
Right there. Stacy, that, that shows your easement right near the north arrow, cutting across
Yep.
Four acre parcel and then on to forty two.
Yeah, I see it right there.
Yeah, the, the little street, right? The old wood road.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And all of this activity is much further west and flat on the flatland. Gotcha.
Right, that's great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, is there someone else who had dialed in that has a comment?
Yes, Paul Lanza and Sue Lanza.
Hi, Paul and Sue.
Um, uh, just to say, we have no objection to the subdivision. We agree with the surveyor about the, we do have use of the right of way. And the Mike Glidden said that he was going to instruct Brian Denno to stake the bound at the end of our, of the end of the right of way on our property. That bound has been covered up for some time and we, we have a letter on record explaining our right of way. And, uh, and also we sent a second letter asking that the right of way be restored to the way that it shows on the Foley plan. And I can give you a little historic background of it. Uh, the Browns are the third party to own that house. When Dr. Downs owned it, it was as shown on the Foley plan as a single entrance. Sometime later, Brian Foley bought his way into the back of the Brown property. And trucks started cutting across our property line over the bound to get in to some graveling operation that was going on back there. We have, since we've lived here, the, uh, street was paved and a curbing put up. And a per, the curbing that was put up acknowledged the cut that Brian Foley had made to the right, would be to the right hand side of the right of way. And what we have a second letter that the, the planning department has asking that that be restored. The accident of the curbing was only in reference to what was a cut that was made by Foley and the other side of the right of way. So we'd like that single right of way restored so that our property can be restored. And, um, Mike, when I talked to Mike Lynn, he said he was going to instruct Brian Denno to mark that bound, uh, at the end of the street. At the end of the right of way.
He did forward me both your letters. And from your first letter, I added the easement onto my plan. And then I saw your other letter on Friday. We did find
Brian, we're having a hard time.
Yeah, here you are.
You have to face the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I did find both a C H D and your front left corner out front. But I also do have a plan that shows the split entrance. I was, and that was done back in nineteen ninety four that actually shows a split entrance with an island in the middle, and it shows the drive actually going over your your property corner, the iron pipe that I show on my plan. Um, as far as restoring it, that is something we'll definitely have to discuss with both you and Mr. Brown. And that's not something I can, I can agree to or force him to do. That's, you know.
Well, you, what about the fact that the stake was to be put on, on the bound? That'll ma- make it a little simpler, won't it?
We, we can, we can stake that property line. We could stake the first couple hundred feet where it's close to the driveway. I can place stake right behind the iron pipe that we found and stake up your property line so you can see the.
There's a, there's a concrete bound at the that has been covered over that's in, fallen into the revised right of way there.
We, we found that iron, we found both the iron pipe that's thirteen feet north of that and the concrete bound. Those are both on my plan. We found those when we were doing the boundary survey.
Okay, I have a plan by Alfred of our property, if you'd like it, it may help you.
I have that plan also. And during my research, we, we got that, that map. Thank you.
Yeah, well, the right of, the, the historic marker has fallen in and out of significance some years ago. When Ensign Bickford was having an anniversary, uh, they asked if they could use my backyard for parking while they sent people out to see the bound. But of the it was never an issue in terms of our cut and the cut that was made by previous, previous owners. And I like, I like, I like that restored to the original plan. And I have, I sent a letter in that the planning board has uh, asking that that be done. Because if you put the stake in at the bound, it's gonna be in the way of the trucks that go in and out of there.
That, that seems like a discussion we should have with Mr. Foley.
Well, he can instruct your CRS to, uh, straighten that out then, can't he? I don't know what plan shows the, the, the double access to that right of way. But that only happened as an accident of
Abuse.
Foley's use of that right of way before the town paved the street and put the cut in there. I'm, I'm sure that the only thing that's proper is the one that shows the street right away like it was when we bought the property.
Okay, seems like a discussion for Mr. Foley. Mr. Brown really doesn't have control over that. That's actually an encumbrance on his property that Mr. Foley uses to gain access to his property out back. And I think we need to have that discussion with them, um, because Mr. Brown really doesn't have control over that.
Well, once. Once that bound on our corner property is staked out, it falls into the, that right hand cut that goes in there, which is what we would like to have eliminated.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so, um, it, it's an issue in terms of our future sale of the property. And
And the frontage.
And the frontage that's shown on our plan. And I'll drop off a plan at, uh, I have a couple of them. I'll drop it off at either the town hall or Denno's office, wherever that may be.
Hey, Paul, it's Ted. Why don't we, why don't we talk tomorrow or something like that? And we'll, we'll switch, we'll change whatever you want changed here. I you know, the, the driveway's been the same way the whole time I've lived here, but I understand what you're saying, and we'd be happy to make it a straight driveway instead of a a cut at the end.
Yeah, well, I'm eight, I'm eighty five years old, yet, yet cooking.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll, you'll call me tomorrow?
I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Give them your phone number.
I know your number. I'll, I'll walk next door and see.
That'll, that'll be easier.
Yeah, okay.
Just give me a little, give me a little warning. I got a doctor's appointment at eleven o'clock and I'll be gone for an hour, but other than that, I'll be free all day, Ted.
Okay, it'll be afternoon, uh, like five o'clock or something.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, so that, that conversation, uh, does it have any bearing on the application?
No.
Okay, so that, that's gonna be, uh, something you resolve with amongst yourselves.
Well, Denno's gonna show the right of way.
On its mouth.
That abuts our property and Ted Brown's property, is that right?
Correct.
As part of your subdivision.
As part of your request, we will mark that property line on the ground, and we will of course show the easement on the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, do we have any other comments from members of the public?
Please mute the last caller.
Okay, one last opportunity for members of the public to make a comment. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna end that part of the public hearing. Commissioners, any, any other questions or comments that you've thought of since you had your last opportunity?
No, but I, I feel like I can make a decision based on, with, with certain things put in place so they don't have to wait any longer, but I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
Well, didn't we learn that the application is not exactly complete? Something has to be submitted in a filo proposal?
You know what, I, who are the seating commissioners? I just want to be sure that we're following protocol. I just, I didn't know.
I asked Bill if I could ask a question.
Oh, okay.
I don't have to.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not deliberating at this point.
Okay. No, I, I think that the two things were the fee in lieu of, and do we want to pick a number? I don't.
Yeah, thirty three hundred, it's already been established.
Okay, and then the other one was.
Revising the. Revising the plot plan to show, uh, the recently uncovered easements.
Right, so if, if that gets done, can't we do a provisional, say, you know, it, it, with that this would be contingent on that.
Approval and those being on the plan.
Right.
I have to put the approval letter on the plan anyway, and whatever conditions you have, I have to put on the plan. And then I send it to Mike, Mike reviews it, make sure that it's in compliance with your approval and has all the conditions on it before anything can be filed with the town.
Yep. Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we approve application, uh, geez.
Good point, Aaron.
Twenty-one, twenty-one dash oh one, uh, with, uh, the condition that the plot plan to be revised to show, uh, the, uh, easement that has come to, to light recently, uh, and also that a, uh, uh, fee in lieu of open space, uh, statement be prepared and submitted, uh, before, uh, uh, be, be submitted for review to Mike Litten.
Is that being, with the fee being thirty-three hundred dollars?
Uh, yes, thank you Craig, the fee being thirty-three hundred dollars.
And the easement being the historic easement.
Correct, okay.
I second.
Okay, uh, Erin, you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? Uh, actually, you know, I have to, I have to back up folks. Uh, we have to close the public hearing first.
Ooh.
So, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make them up.
Okay, Rich made the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Ollie seconds the motion. Any discussion, uh, on the motion to close the public hearing for applica- application twenty-one dash oh one? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes and the public hearing is closed. Okay, so I'm gonna restate my motion for the record. I move that we, uh, approve application twenty-one dash zero one for re-subdivision of thirty-four East Wheaton Street, uh, with the condition that the easement for the, uh, historical, what is it called, marker or historical, uh, location be shown on the, uh, the plans? Uh, and also the condition that a fee in lieu of, uh, open, a fee in lieu of open space statement, uh, in the value of three thousand, three hundred dollars be prepared and submitted to the, uh, town planner.
I second.
Okay, Erin seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the application with conditions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners there.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Right. Okay, we do, uh, have some new business. Um, we have a, uh, two referrals, one from the zoning commission, uh, referring, uh, application twenty-one oh four of E A Y Properties owner Philip Doyle agent for a zone change from R forty to B one on the property located at three-two-two Hot Meadow Street. So, Mr. Doyle, I see you there.
Yes, Mr. Chair, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, Tom, uh, do you or Tom control the screen?
Um, Laura will be controlling the screen. I'd just like to make one, um, reiteration that it is three-three-two Hot Meadow Street. The, um, agenda might have been, uh, three-two-two, just so that you're aware.
Three, three.
Three, three-two. Um, it's the parcel that, um, is between one-eighty-five and two-oh-two that surrounds Abigail's Restaurant, just so we're familiar with the location and everyone's on the same page. Um, but Phil, uh, Laura can, um, do a screen share if you're, if you're needing it.
Yeah, because I've been watching the last application, there seemed to be confusion about where, where things are and.
Mr. Doyle, you can screen share as well if you prefer that. Um, I'd be happy to screen share for you though. It's, it's up to you.
Okay, uh, the, um, first of all, uh, uh, Tom and, and/or Bill, did it, did everybody get, I had sent over to town, uh, a, an electronic file as well as co- copies? Does everybody have copies? So that we, everybody has what we're talking about in front of them?
I believe it's a supplied in Dropbox.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good. Then the, maybe we wanna put up, um, if, if, if you wanna take charge of sharing the screen, maybe put up, um, some of the, uh, the, at least the plan of the site so that we all know, know where we are.
So Laura, will you do that?
Pardon me?
No, Laura, Laura. Are you there?
There with me, one second, I'm doing it right now.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, it's coming up.
Good, good.
Which plan would you like me to share, sir?
This one, this one is the, the technical zoning survey, but that's a hard plan to read, so I'd like to use, let's just, if you can go to the air photo that, that we put into the package.
Absolutely.
Has a red line around the property? Yes, we'll start, we'll start here and then maybe Laura, after we, I finish here, I think the plan that I'd like to use is we, we included two eight-and-a-half by eleven maps, one that chose the existing zoning and then one that showed the proposed zoning.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, I'm Philip Doyle, uh, uh, we are, uh, over on West Street. We've been over here for thirty or so years, we're, uh, land planners. And, uh, we have been working with, um, uh, the, uh, applicant, uh, Adam Westhaver, who's looking to purchase this property from, um, Nord Christiansen and his wife, uh, who, um, are the, I will use the word trustees for the, uh, Yakamore Estate. And it's about a seven-point-five acre piece of property. Uh, it sits with Route, uh, one-eighty-five at the bottom of the screen here. This is a photo that comes from the town G I S site. Uh, Abigail's Restaurant and the daycare facility are in the lower left corner of the picture. And the, uh, the property extends, it's a long property, it extends from the Farmington River on the, on the right over to Hot Meadow Street, Route ten on the left. And there are two buildings on the property at the, at this point, I included pictures in, in the, uh, application we've made to the zoning commission. Uh, one building is a small barn. I think it probably only has fifteen hundred or so square feet, uh, plus or minus of, of space, but it is, uh, ground floor covered, but it is two stories. Uh, and then there is a, um, uh, house, uh, an older, uh, white house, uh, that is a single-family house in the upper, uh, left-hand corner of, of that picture. There's about three acres of the property, uh, towards the river that show in, uh, this, the, the light tone in the air photo here that are, are fields. Uh, the current property owners have, um, uh, made an arrangement with a local farmer to make sure that those fields, uh, continue to be, um, uh, farmed, uh, so that they don't return to just brush-covered, um, uh, brush-covered, uh, mess. Uh, there's a pond on, on the property, you can see that dark spot in, in the, um, in the middle. Uh, and what we are, are, are doing is, is asking the zoning commission to approve a, um, a rezoning from R forty to B one. And, um, uh, the reason we are doing it is that, um, Adam, my client, would like, he, in the businesses he runs, he has a small brewery. And since he does not have, uh, a brewery, Adam lives in town, he's lived in town for about twenty years. And he would like to, um, uh, build or, or rehab the barn, we might have to do a small addition to it, but he'd like to use the barn as a brewery. And I have a tasting room there. And, uh, our feeling has been, use like that, it seems to be perfect, uh, for the setting of the, the fields and the landscape, um, uh, along the, the river. And you can see the barn is in that lower-left corner of the site that is, that is, uh, outlined with the red line. It sits almost directly behind, uh, in the trees, behind the Abigail's, uh, restaurant. Um, the, um, if we go, if we could go, uh, Laura, to the, the picture of the existing zoning, that, that map, an eight-and-a-half by eleven? Sort of vertically oriented? Go to the next one? Right here, it's kind of a very light, uh, uh, map that comes from this town G I S system. But it shows in, in, in color, uh, the, um, the zoning that we have. Uh, sites are forty, most of the, 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 um, properties tending on the east side of Hot Meadow Street in the Wheaton area are, are tending to go to, um, uh, business zoning. Uh, B one, uh, is primarily the, the, the zone on the west side of the street, uh, particularly in this area, uh, that's, uh, strong R forty. You know, we, we have the, on the other side of the street, we have the White Memorial Fountain, we have the, uh, Civil War, um, monument, and we have, uh, nicer, older homes that, that, uh, we would hope that, to have no impact upon. The, the Abigail's Restaurant is the B one zone that is, and it looks like an out parcel, looks like an intrusion into the site we're looking at. It, it, it's interesting that Abigail's, uh, that parcel, when it was Pettibone's, was about one-point-seven acres, yep, that was just where the cursor was. At some point in the relatively recent past, the zoning commission, and you must have been involved, I know we were not involved, but there was a, a, a sale of about one acre in, uh, an L-shaped piece that now projects into this piece, uh, and, uh, for the, uh, construction, the addition of, of more parking, uh, for Abigail's. And that went through a process that included a rezoning to, to B one. So at point, some point in the last few years, the B one zone was expanded in, into this piece. I know, it has to be now ten years ago, uh, we did the, the rezoning and the site plans for the River View, and the River View piece is the B one zone that is immediately above this, uh, this complex of parcels we're, we're, we're looking at, right there. Uh, the, I would say that the town zoning map is incorrect and it's, uh, something I've talked to Mike Litten about when we did the rezoning for, for, uh, the, um, River View. Uh, the re, the B one zone goes right down to, uh, to the, to the river. It is overlaid by the floodplain zone, but it goes, uh, right down to the river for some, there's some kind of Scribner's error in the way the town zone map was put together, uh, in that it doesn't reflect the full extent of the B one zone. The, um, so we're looking to expand the B one zone out of the, um, Abigail site onto our site. Um, the, it's interesting, when, when the town P O C D was put together, Bill, I think you wrote the introduction, the, the, there was a, going to be at some point a study of the Wheaton area, I don't think that ever, uh, transpired, uh, but the, we've tried to follow and look at and be aware of the guidance for, for this area. I think one of the reasons why Adam was attracted to this particular site is because of the character, uh, not only the historic structures in the area, but the views of the river, uh, the presence of the river, the fields, all of that conveys a certain type of, of feeling. And, uh, we believe that the use we're looking to achieve would, uh, would fit right in with that. It's because of, of the proximity to the river, this site does not have a lot of deep, I guess that's the word I'd, I'd use, uh, development potential. If we have seven acres of land, about one-point-five acres of those land, acres of that land is above the floodplain, the whole rest of the site, uh, from where you would see, approximately where you would see, I wrote the, the, the letter B of B one, everything to the right of that is all floodplain zone, um, that, that could be used for parking or some other kind of activity. But, but it has no other, uh, potential, um, our plans at this point would, uh, leave the house as it is, uh, not making any changes and leave the fields in farming, but ultimately we'd like to go to, uh, the zoning commission and seek an approval to, uh, rehab the bu- uh, barn so we could use it as a, a small brewery. And that's the story. Sorry I took so long to explain that, but, um, we're here for referral. We have a public hearing set with the zoning commission, uh, I think the fifth of, of, uh, April. And, um, I guess that's, that's it, and right over there, and in his mask is Adam. So, uh, questions?
Um. Alan, I bet you're looking up, uh, maybe you're not looking up, but what, uh, maybe I'll pose the question to Tom, don't mean to catch you cold here. What are other permitted uses, uh, for B one zone?
Um, I have that right here, just give me one second.
Yeah, I, I've got it too, uh, uh, Bill, and it's, that's the, B one is the, considered the, I think it's the restricted business. But it's, it's quite a, there's quite a list, uh, Bill, you know, you got retail stores, taverns, uh, specially limited menus, you know, restaurants, things like that, convenience stores, commercial parking lots, markets, outside storage, uh, banks, professional office, bank and studio. Um, and, 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 uh, our, our intent would be to go into zoning under, um, retail, you can imagine. Because, because retail allows the manufacturer of a product on the property with, uh, less than five employees, and a small brewery like this might have two or three employees. But you're allowed to sell your, your product.
Mm-hmm.
In, in this case, if, if we, if we made beer, we'd be selling, able to sell beer and have a, a tasting room. And Mike's, uh, Glidden's thought on, on that would be, the tasting room would be an ancillary use to, accessory use to the, uh.
The retail.
The retail.
And Bill, anything that goes in any of the, um, business, um, district zoning, B one, B two, B three, or professional office, eh, there's no as-of-right, it's all site plan or special exception through the zoning commission. So any uses would have to be reviewed through the zoning commission for approval. So there's no just as-of-right, um, use for anything. And so it's pretty well spelled out. If there's any con- specific concern, I can look at it for you.
No, I don't, it's not specific, it's actually, I think, general in nature and, um, I, I'm gonna speak for the commission and if anybody, uh, doesn't see it my way, please, you know, give me your point of view, but we're always, uh, concerned about the, uh, what could happen despite what's being proposed, you know, making a zone change, uh, opens up, uh, different opportunities, uh, for a particular parcel. Um, you know, applicants, uh, always come in with, um, you know, th- this is what we're thinking of doing and, um, um, and, and generally that's what happens, okay? But it doesn't preclude something else from happening, but, uh, we have a little bit of assurance that, uh, there, there is at least a, another re- review of any use, uh, by, by the zoning commission, which kind of, kind of satisfies me personally. Um, you know, it, it doesn't look all that odd to put a note, to expand the B one zone. Uh, you have Abigail's and the, uh, the daycare center there. Um, I, I, I believe this is consistent with the, the plan of conservation and development from an economic development standpoint and, uh, you know, I, I'll take, I'll take Phil's, um, comments, uh, uh, at face value and, um, you know, it sounds like the applicant wants to preserve the look of that parcel. And, you know, it sounds like the applicant wants to preserve the look of that parcel. So, yeah, I'm I'm making a case here, commissioners, to to return a positive referral.
So and also, Bill, if if I heard correctly, because of the floodplain, it would be limited what they could do to the right of Abigail's, going down to the river. They wouldn't be able to put up a building on that side by the river with potential.
I I don't I don't know what the restrictions would be. I tend to agree with you, Aaron, that the likelihood of, you know,
A big office building going.
Right, yeah, probably pretty low.
Yeah, yeah.
Under under current FEMA regulations, it would be a difficult hurdle to cross.
Yeah.
Yeah, but people try, right, Tom? You know, we
There are available options to certain things, but the scale and the scope of things, there's floodway and floodplain, so cost versus benefit can be an issue there. I don't I don't. If it's getting more and more difficult as time goes on.
So Phil, you mentioned you mentioned the house that's there. Is that a residence right now?
Yes, it is, it has been for for quite, I mean, I don't maybe Nord knows the age, but it's been there for quite a long time, nice looking house, and it's a residence. I I I understand that the lady who rents it also has her, she's an artist and she might have a gallery in it. I've never been in, but it it's a residence, maybe a home, a home business.
I I can fill in a little bit there if you want.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
My my in-laws bought the house about 25 years ago. It's been a just a residential house this entire time. My father-in-law, I know, had hoped that at some point, something else would be done with the property, but he never did. In all honesty, before Adam came along, I had two other people approach me about breweries there. Neither one of them were well, how do I put it, healed enough to to make it work. Adam seems like he's he's in a good position that way. You know, the the house is just, it's been a residence, and my understanding, it's going to continue to be that for now, so.
So that's an allowable use in B1?
It would be if if we had the rezoning, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming. And Bill, at this point, the only thing I guess thought about is maybe putting his office in in part of the first floor of the of the office in the of the house. But but that's not even decided yet.
Okay, commissioners, any any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Would they consider growing hops in the field if they were going to consider farming?
That's that's one of the activities that we're looking to do, yes. On the low on the lower portion from an aesthetic value, we would we were definitely going to consider that, that's been brought up, yes.
That'd be great, and I know so.
And we're gonna and we're gonna try and continue the farming use in at least one section over there. It just it's it's a nice spot. I live right up behind Ethel Walker, so I drive by that property every day, and I I love the look of the property, I love the way it flows, I love that red barn. I think the red barn needs some restoration as it is. It's starting to have a little bit of a ripple in the in the roof. And instead of seeing that thing fall apart and fall down, I'd like to give it a little tender loving care, boost it up and make this property a, you know, a, you know, a gateway, I guess, if you want to call it, to Simsbury, have it be a destination point. I mean, it's a great area where people can congregate and hang out. You have the heavy lawn tower in the background, you have the river right there, you have Abigail's, it's just, it's a nice setting. And I'd like to continue to see that happen within the town. Town's done a great job with everything they've had in the past and what we've done, and we want to continue in that vein.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to be able to use your land to grow something that you would then use in the barn. I mean, you know, carbon footprint and all of that, so, yeah.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
I'll tell you, my husband will be excited for a reason.
Could could we ask about the properties that would be sandwiched between site and the other B1 properties? There appears to be two, and I'm I'm kind of racking my brain to see to remember what it looks like down there. There's the properties that will now be sandwiched in between the B1s.
Yeah, the the we we all on the team have met, know everybody. Mike Yakamore Jr. owns the Blue House that is on the 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 piece. There are actually three properties between us, for example, and where the the River View building is. And I don't know if Laura can put the plan up again? But I want to explain.
Bear with me one minute, just this has a bit of a lag.
That's a very good question, and it's very interesting because there's been a lot of discussion. Laura is finding it. When you do look at
While she's doing that, one I one other question, and it's just out of curiosity, it doesn't have anything to do with my decision on the apple or the referral, but is there another structure on the property?
Behind the White House, there is, I didn't notice it till we were out on the property the other day, there is a smaller building, like a caretaker's house, that that is in pretty sad shape, but it exists behind the house.
And there was something closer to the 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 L-shaped parking lot.
That that was the a like a
That's the greenhouse.
Yeah, okay, I thought, yeah, it looked like a greenhouse.
But it's like
Plastic greenhouse, hoop house. I don't think it's there anymore.
Okay.
Wow.
It was something Bill Walsh used for for starting and and growing plants that he then set out in the fields.
Okay.
Very temporary structure.
If Laura, you could take your cursor and and maybe follow my my discussion of the properties, yes.
So let me let me ask Laura to do one thing. Laura, over on the right-hand side, you can you can hide the conversation pane, and it'll keep you over by the bell, there you go. Does that make it any better? Yeah, marginally.
Yeah, that's better, that's better.
You can even zoom in a little bit if you wanted to. There you go.
Bunch of bosses around here, Laura.
At the at the top of that picture, you see that parking lot, that's the parking lot that this is the southern lot for the River View.
Yeah.
And and the River View owns the 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 piece that the parking lot is on, and then it there's there's a point, it it runs down to the to the river in a southeasterly direction right there. All of the woods to the north of that are owned by the River View. That that triangular shape that that comes back up exactly where you are, coming back up in that direction. And then it that lot is owned right there, it's all owned by the the people who own the Blue House, which would be Nord's brother-in-law, Mike Yakamore Jr. And there's a another piece of property just to the north of the Blue House that is in between the parking lot for River View and the Blue House right there. That that is the house of the Littles. And both of those properties would at the moment be zoned R40. And when we had conversations with the zoning commission, they asked the same question and said, shouldn't we be looking at this area comprehensively? And we said, well, you perhaps should because the the B1 zone, it looks like it's tending to grow coming north from 185, it already exists to the north up by the River View. And I I I believe Rich and Nord and perhaps Mike Glidden have had conversations with both property owners in between. And everyone has been amenable to a zone change, a comprehensive zone change to B1. The Littles are are an older couple, and one of their stipulations has been that they do not want to see a tax, a property tax change if they they are town rezones the land. And and Mike Jr., as I understand, has the same concern, does not want to pay additional taxes.
The idea is the taxes wouldn't change until the use actually changed.
And and I
That would be the concern.
And and Norwood, the you you can correct me because we we had this discussion the other day out in the parking lot at Fitzgerald's. That was all moving along fine a week ago until the state legislature started to have a hearing.
Right.
The the mansion tax that started out as taxing a 1% mill on across the whole state on any host home over 800,000. Then that
Over 300,000 access value.
It dropped then, but it started at eight.
Okay.
It dropped to three, and then I was informed that it it included all commercial properties starting at at
Dollar one.
Zero, yeah, dollar one. So so this would have potentially meant a an increase in taxes to them. And everybody has the the Littles and and Mike Yakamore Jr. have said, no, I'm not interested if if I have to pay more taxes because the land would be zoned commercial.
Well, especially especially because then it would be from dollar one, too. It's not just a nominal tax increase to the town of Simsbury. It would be a a one mill on the entire value to the state of Connecticut. So that would be that would be a hefty increase.
Yeah, our our impression would be Simsbury would get nothing out of it, the state would get the would get the tax. And so it has stopped an effort that the zoning commission thought might be appropriate to have this entire area go to to B1. The other thing I would say, Laura, when when there's a piece of, there's a rectangular piece of property just to the east of the the Blue House. If you take your cursor and you go up a little bit, right above our site, right there, that's an additional piece of property that's owned, it's it's all either wetland or floodplain, but that's also owned by the River View. So the River View owns that piece separate and must have come with with their purchase from the from the Yakamores a number of years ago.
Almost like Yakamores wanted to preserve access to the river or something.
Could be, Mike Senior was always looking to preserve access through old farm connections, that type of thing. We did a lot of work for him. He was an interesting guy.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? No? Okay, then I I'm going to make a motion that we return a positive referral to application 2104 for a zoning change from R40 to B1, as it is consistent with the 2017 Plan of Conservation and Development as it relates to economic development, I'll say.
I'll second that. Oh, go ahead, Craig.
Okay, Craig seconded. Any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, all in favor of returning a positive referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Can I ask one thing for Nord to see his name and address for the record for our clerk?
I'm sorry, Nord Christensen, 35 West Mountain Road, West Simsbury.
Thank you very much for hearing us tonight, it was enjoyable. And I would would say, if you haven't met Tom, I've I've known Mr. Hazel now for a number of years, as I was most disappointed, he left a planning position over in Windsor to come over here to our hometown. Pleased to have him here, he's a great planner. So look forward to working with Mr. Hazel here.
Thank you, Phil.
Good to hear, good to hear, Phil. All right, well, good luck with the the zoning commission and, yeah, let's let's hope something positive comes from it.
Oh, we're we're going to be moving forward now, once we get our get through our our public hearing, we'd like to move forward as soon as possible.
Good, good luck.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, now that brings us to
Pettibone's brew pub or something like that, you know what I mean? Keep it with the Simsbury theme there, Pettibone's Brewery.
Well, you know
Join the staff, Aaron.
What was that?
Looks like you're ready to join the staff, you know, give them suggestions on plantings and names.
Oh, yeah, grow the hops, that's beautiful.
Well, people have people have been making, you know, noise about a brewery in town for for years now, and if, you know, there's been certain, you know, roadblocks to it, but maybe this one will work. As far as a destination goes, you know, I was I was at Pettibone or what's it called now, Abigail's?
Abigail's.
Abigail's, maybe a couple of years ago, and, you know, the the line's out the door.
Yeah.
And I've heard people say, oh, we drove for 40 minutes to come to, you know, come to Abigail's in Simsbury, you know, and having, you know, having another attraction like a brewery right next door, I I think it's it it's a it's a good recipe.
Yeah, I I really love the idea that they're going to use that land to farm for themselves, you know, and it's like I I just think that's kind of cool and
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, and I I wish them good luck.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have General Commission Business P O C Update Workshop. So this is kind of an ongoing thing.
I don't think you have the updated agenda in front of you, there's the
Oh, cap, okay, sorry. Another referral. Yep, thanks, Tom. Yeah, referral for the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2120. Now, remember, in years past, we would have the town engineer come in and kind of give us an update of these capital improvement projects. So I think we're being asked to give a referral.
I I can only go on Mike's staff report on this, considering this is my first year in the position, I can't talk to consistency over the years and how how it is, but we're looking to see if it fits our our general P O C D plans and improvements. So I would just look at it under the scope of, does it fit our 2017 P O C D?
Well, Bill, to your point, I really would like someone to explain it. I I've read it, but it's just a spreadsheet, you know, it doesn't have any further explanation. Could we request for our next meeting?
No, it's it's either a referral or a non-referral, and a non-referral is a positive referral. Unfortunately, that's what I was given, I believe this is going to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know when, but I would look at Mr. Glidden's staff report. And I would, I, other than that, I don't know the procedure that you normally have, unfortunately. But I can't say from my 10 years in municipal work that it seems like a unnormal CIP proposal as far as road improvements and park improvements and school improvements, but because it's Board of Ed, Public Works and Car Cultures and Park and Recreation outside of the library working space, I think. Actually, they don't have anything until 2022, so. And then there's a general government, excuse me, I missed general government for the Meadowwood acquisition.
Right, so there's two two big, two big items that stand out. First is the Meadowwood acquisition. Second is the Latimer Lane renovate as new on the second page. That's the big sluggo for 2122.
Yeah.
And I believe Meadowwood would be bonding and grant funding, and you're looking at the Latimer one, let me catch up with you here. Latimer looks like bonding and grant as well, possibly, I I don't, I believe that's what the G is for. Latimer looks like bonding and grant as well, possibly, I, I don't, I believe that's what the G is for.
Right.
That's a very large amount of money.
But does it, I mean, the money, the money is not our matter, that's the Board of Selectmen, it says, does those improvements fit with the POCD, improving schools? Improve, getting open space acquisitions, I mean, those are all seem to be POCD items. Unfortunately, the Board of Selectmen in that public hearing, if you, as a resident, have an issue, you can probably voice the monetary issues at that point in time.
Well, the POCD encourages education, but it, I don't recall it saying blank checks.
That would be the Board of Selectmen public hearing, where we're all about the POCD here. Unfortunately, we're not the budgetary in the fi, the Fiscal Commission, so. I would definitely, if you have an issue, attend the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, I don't see anything that's contrary to the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Agreed.
Someone want to make a motion, please?
I would give a positive referral to the Board of Selectmen regarding the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2122.
Is there a second? Okay, Rich, gotcha. Any further discussion? All in favor of returning a positive referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Holly is opposed to the positive referral, any abstentions? Okay, five to one to zero, the motion passes. Okay, thank you. All right, so now I'll get to where I jumped to just a minute ago. General Commission Business, POCD update, this is an ongoing effort that we've been working on. You guys know me, I lose attention after an hour and a half, so.
And, and honestly, with my education on where you are at the POCD process and the reviews and stuff, I would recommend that you table it for a time that you have Michael's ear, because he's been part of the process.
Yeah.
Or until I'm up to speed enough in order to participate.
Yeah, I'll just give you a thumbnail summary, there are certain terms that are used throughout the POCD that have recently come into unfavor, namely, like the word "character" and certain other terms, and we want to, we want to review the POCD and see if we need to make any adjustments.
Okay. Bill, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
I'd sit down to rewrite some stuff to see what you guys would think, but events have way overtaken us, okay? There's really, in my opinion, no point about talking rewriting the POCD when there's a couple of bills in the legislature that are going to completely change everything, so I think we got to wait and see what happens. There's a bill in committee, I don't know if people know about it, Senate Bill 1024. It is far-reaching, to say the least, it will require amending to state standards or rewriting zoning regulations, for example, by June of 2022. So.
Isn't, isn't there a house bill, isn't there a house bill?
There's a house bill that's a little more gentle, that's, it's, I don't know as much about that one, I've spent a couple of days rereading this, there's, there's a lot in there, you really ought to take a look at it.
Do you have the version, i- i- is it a rewrite of existing regulations?
No, it's a new bill that totally removes all the enabling legislation that calls for us, the zoning commission. It, it's remarkable, it really is, I mean, the, the most benign thing that I liked was it calls for yearly training for land use commissioners, six hours a year.
Yeah.
But it, just as they occur to me, you can't regulate mobile homes any differently than you regulate single-family homes. Every single-family home can have an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, by right.
By right, it's a lot of stuff by right, it starts off basically, this is from memory, but it starts off basically saying that anything that has to do with affordable housing, accessory apartments, can be regulated this way, this way, this way, this way, and then shortly into the bill, it takes all that away and says that everything is to be rewritten. People, if they, if they object to a decision regarding a proposal, have direct access to the Superior Court. Yeah, I'm happy to, offline, if somebody wants to, I'll, I got four pages of notes, I'm happy to share with anybody, I don't think this is the forum to do it, but.
Your, your suggestion is to hold off on considering changes to the POCD.
Oh, it's pointless, I, in my opinion, it's pointless, Bill, take a look at the bill, you tell me, but.
Yeah, I've, I've read the other one, you know, that.
If, this is in committee, who knows where it's going to go, but the thing I noticed is that, and I watched the public hearing, too, so. They don't like the word "character," some people are saying it's a dog whistle, which I think is untrue. I mean, we have a list of character places, I mean, it's pretty clear what our POCD means about character. But interesting to me, the word "character" appears in this proposed Senate bill, too.
But it, that shouldn't preclude us from working on some of the language, I don't, I don't.
Well, you can work on it all you want, but it, it's just, it might be tossed, I think we ought to find out if this is going to go forward.
Well, what would be tossed, I mean, we've talked about, I mean.
The entire document. Okay.
I. It's hard to believe we're going to toss the whole POCD, really?
Aaron, Aaron, there's, there's, you know, kind of over, there are undertones of having the state take over the, you know, like a statewide POCD.
Oh, is that what you were saying?
There is a statewide POCD, ours would have to be subservient to that.
Gotcha.
There's a lot there, that, a lot of things has a right.
All right, let, let me, let me dig up those two pieces of legislation, okay, and send them to everybody.
Take a look at them.
At least the, the.
I have the link, Bill, if that helps you, I don't know if you have it.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a house bill as well, I don't know why they're both going on at the same time.
Well, I think they're, one's a little gentler than the other.
Yeah, I agree with Alan.
Like, like a lot of ideas, the, the goal is laudable, okay, the method is a little heavy-handed. In my opinion, you may not agree, but. And who knows what'll happen, it may not get out of committee, it may get out of committee with enough changes that, but it, it's going to make things extraordinarily different.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you send me that link, and then I'll.
I, I've got the link for the Senate bill, you've got the one for the House bill?
I do, yeah.
Great, yep, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
And then I can forward it to, to all the commissioners.
Yeah, 27 pages.
Yeah, so the issue would be, this is a long session, so it goes until June. So.
These changes, if this passes, are in effect October 1st.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, and see, they, ideally, you rewrite your regs, okay, they don't give you any time to do it, so one of the proponents says, well, we're willing to give you the language for free, you won't have to hire a consultant, you just have to do what you're told.
So if that's the case, Alan, then to your point, what's the point of updating?
That's what I said.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, to your point, until we know, we could be changing this and doing work, only to have.
Changing it for no, no purpose at this point.
All right, then, let's, yeah, let's mull that over, let's, we'll take a look at the legislation, it's a lot of words, and I don't know if you've read articles in the newspaper, heard things on TV or the radio, it, it's pretty, yeah, it's aggressive, and, and I don't mean, the tactics are aggressive, I don't know about the changes, they're, they're pretty aggressive, in my opinion, too, but yeah, i- i- it's a different, a different way of kind of governing the, the land use.
Well, you lose, you lose local control, which, and I, I can see where local control can be criticized for not really meeting the needs of everyone in the state in terms of mobility, et cetera, I get that, but this is, needs to be thought about a little bit.
Okay, then, good, thanks, everybody, for, for, for tonight, we had two good applications, and Laura and Tom, thanks. And Amanda, always there, thank you very much. I would look for a, a motion to adjourn.
So, no.
Oh, Rich, I thought everybody wanted to keep going.
I think we're too tired to even do a motion.
And is there a second? Craig seconds, okay, we have Rich made a motion to adjourn, Craig seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Holly, you're not opposing this time?
No, I said aye.
And no abstentions, okay, motion par, carries unanimously, thanks, everybody, good night.
Nice to do business, like, what, you know.
Yeah, I know.
It really was, all right, have a good week.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye.